Okay, all right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's February 17th, 2021, and we'll begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens.
Morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
Move to add agenda item G, a resolution to ratify the emergency declaration.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second and another item.
Move to add item H to the agenda, resolution number 2021-12.
Second.
Great, move motion and a second on both items. Comments, questions? All right, with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on adding agenda items G and A?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much. Okay, and now we move on to department updates, and we will begin with Penny Cottle from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me again. I will start with kind of an update that the vaccine and testing sites are back open again. Want to thank everybody for their patience these past few days and staying home. IU Health, the Med Arts Building is open today for vaccine appointments. So if you have an appointment at the Med Arts Building, they are open and providing those vaccines. Our clinic at the Convention Center today, normally we would be open on Wednesday. We had already, because of a conflict, moved that to Friday, so the vaccine clinic is not scheduled to be open again until Friday. So we will be open Friday and Saturday for our appointments. The testing sites, Morton Street, is back open today from 8:00 to 3:00, and the Optum site is open, but they will have shorter hours today of 9:00 to 6:30. They do have several staff who travel quite a distance to come, and I think that they wanted to get them back on the roads earlier rather than later with potential snow. Again, thanks, everybody, for their patience as we navigated balancing the safety of people getting out and getting vaccine and all of that. Not easy decisions, and we thank the Commissioners and Allison Moore and everybody for kind of factoring those things in, and want to give a shout out to the road crews and first responders for their work these past few days. Thank you, thank you. Our, the Convention Center site, we have staff who are calling everybody who had an appointment on Monday to reschedule them. So we tried to get that message out, and I would just say a reminder that locally, the best way to get information about any kind of changes at our testing sites or vaccine site will be through signing up for the county alert system. The state did send out information. Information went out to everybody who had appointments canceled because there were many, many clinics across the state that were closed, but it did not provide the full information that we could provide through our Everbridge, through our alert system. So there was a little bit of confusion. Some people did use 211, which was fine, except that that means that they got an appointment much later out perhaps than what we are able to do. So we do have staff still calling people. They will be finishing that up hopefully today. I will just say that keep in mind, if you scheduled an appointment that's out somewhere in March, and we're able to get you in quicker, that you may get, you know, a text that tells you that one was canceled and then the new one's made. And our staff has been staying on the line with people, walking them through that, but I just kind of wanted to mention that because it may be confusing for some people. The other thing that I want to mention about the system notification is that if somebody provided a landline, then they could not receive a text, and so they may not have had a cell number that could receive that text to cancel that appointment. So again, yet another reason to use that county alert system because that message was in there that we would be calling people. So just kind of to update how that works. And I know that Allison Moore talks almost every week about the county alert system and getting signed up for that. So we will ensure that we have even more signage at the clinic site to remind people to do that. The Board of Health did meet last night. They reviewed current regulations, just had discussion about where we are, but at this time are not making any changes to those regulations. They will meet again on March 11th and will again look at the data and look at the regulations and determine if they feel the need to make changes at that time. Our cases per 100,000 are still over 100, which is still moderately high, and that's a concern. So with the variants and things, we want to watch that very, very cautiously. When we meet again, we should have, again, more data in terms of what's happened post-Super Bowl and those kinds of things. If we're seeing, starting to see increase in variants in the state, and so we can make some further decisions. Hopefully, in things will be trending down and continue to do that, and we can see improvements as opposed to any kind of further restrictions. But I don't anticipate things right now. I will also remind people, however, that the health officer can, if he sees a big change between now and the 11th, he could make some adjustments as well. So we don't have to wait until the 11th if something great were to happen and we wanted to make some changes. The governor's order is also in effect until the end of February, so this gives us time to also see what the state is planning to do. And the only other thing that I'm going to add is that people, when they look at the data, may see that the last few days have had low numbers of positive cases, but keep in mind our testing sites have been closed, and even those that have been open have had reduced amount of testing. So that is to be expected, and we may see a rebound in that as clinics open up. We may see a jump in cases. So don't, we're happy that those numbers are low, but that could be just a factor of the weather, and I just wanted to make that point.
Great, great point. Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for staying on top of things, as usual.
And the staff are, the staff have been great. They've been calling people. We do have some medical students who want to get involved and kind of call and confirm appointments for people. So we're talking to them about how that might work, maybe help people make sure they've got the right appointment at the right place and that kind of information.
That's great. That's really good. And yeah, and I appreciate the point you made about infection rates and the closure of testing sites because of the weather. It was a big weather event, and that's going to have an impact. So, but it also kept some people home so that, you know, as much as we're getting tired of being told to stay home, this was a really important one. And so, yeah, so it was very good. Thank you for that. All right, and with that, we will move on to emergency management. Ms. Allison Moore, who hopefully got some sleep.
Hey, good morning. My video's not working this morning, so I'm just on via audio, but I did. I got some sleep last night. So thanks for that, Commissioner Thomas. I have several different announcements I'd like to make today, so we'll just get right into it. The first I want you to know is our 2019 salary grant finally is closed out, so we should see that money drop back into our account soon. I know that there were some issues at the Homeland Security, on the Homeland Security side with that grant, not anything from Monroe County. So it's almost time to get our 2020 salary back. We had thought we might get that dropped before the 19. Looks like they're going to probably happen simultaneously together, but that is taken care of and wanted you to be aware of that. We do have February blood drive dates. Again, I'll announce, like I did last week, those are still full. Sometimes people have to drop out, and there's become spots available, but that is not the case for this month. So I'll announce those March dates. They are the 17th from 2:00 to 7:00 and the 18th from 10:00 to 3:00. We do have dates scheduled through June, and we're already working on July. So if that's something you're interested in making a donation for, you can go to rco.munro.in website and look at those dates and see what date might work for you, and then hop over to the redcross.org website and select that date and make that appointment. We again can appreciate the Monroe County Convention Center. They have been wonderful with working with us for those blood drives as well as those vaccine clinics, and we're very fortunate that we have that working collaboration with them. As this month continues, just real quickly, I focused on earthquake awareness. It's super hard to even think about earthquake with everything else that we've got going on right now. But I had, I did mention in the third week, we were going to talk about recovery. So just real quick, if we do have an earthquake and you suddenly hear that, you will, if you've signed up for earthquakes through our alert system, get a message. If not, there will be information, I'm sure, on local news channels, radio channels and such, if that becomes something that we have. And I would encourage everybody to drop, cover their head, and hold on until the earthquake stops shaking. And then you can evaluate your situation, see what your home is like, or the office, or wherever you may be at that given earthquake time, and you might find it necessary to evacuate. So it's good to have an evacuation plan for you and your family in case that's something that has to happen very quickly. Next week, I will be, we're talking about the recovery side of earthquakes. So just make those notes and hopefully be prepared for if something like that happens. Speaking of that alert system, we have been using it the last three to four days, probably more than you maybe wanted, but it's good that we have that alert system, and we have in fact been using it for travel ordinances back and forth between the different levels, as well as cancellations and weather-related events. And if that is something that you wish to receive, you can go to the homepage, monroe, c o.munro.in.us and click on that megaphone. We actually got a couple of phone calls throughout this storm of people that needed help being able to walk through that, that didn't have internet access or was a little, maybe not computer savvy, which is perfectly fine, and we are always willing to help those individuals get signed up for those alerts so that they can receive those messages. And I encourage you, if you're a person that has in fact signed up, to spread the word to others in our community that may not be aware of this, and encourage them to get signed up for our system. It's a great way for just the detailed local, a lot of things that, you know, a lot of weather notifications that you receive may be a real general notification for the entire state of Indiana or southern Indiana, but our alerts are focused specifically on Monroe County. And so if that's something that you're interested in receiving, you would find it helpful. Our Emergency Operations Center continues to remain open. It is virtual at this point, and we, between Kate and myself, are tag teaming those hours to keep it open in case additional resources are needed. We did receive several requests and resources that were needed the last few days, and we were able to fulfill those requests and work with our community partners during the winter storm. It's not over. The hard, the worst part is definitely behind us, but we are anticipated to get a little bit of snow this evening. Across the state of Indiana, there's a 66% chance. Right here in Monroe County, it's about a 56% chance that we could get between 1 to 3 inches after midnight this evening into about 2:00 a.m. So keep that in mind. Tomorrow morning, that commute might be a little slippery yet again, as well as what we already have on our roads that the guys are trying to get off from this winter storm. And a lot of those drifting secondary roads are still trying to be cleaned up today. So just know that there's some more potential for that, some more to be added to that potentially tonight. We do still have our warming stations open, and I want to mention those again. The fire stations have been willing to open the doors. It's still bitter cold, and it is going to get warmer, but it is still pretty cold out there. The windshield, the wind chill is, you know, still chilly. If there's someone that doesn't have heat or someone that doesn't have a home, they can take advantage of those warming stations, and that list is on our website. If that's something you don't have access to, we would be more than happy to help any individual that might need it by calling our office at 812-349-2546, or they can call 211 for any information about those warming stations. And we thank our fire departments for being willing to open their doors for those individuals. You do have to have a mask required, and you must remain six feet away from other individuals while you're at those warming stations. If you don't have a mask, one will be provided for you at the door. It is going to warm up next week, and that's exciting, but yet can also cause a little bit of issues with all this snow that we received. And it is going to rain on top of that. So I encourage residents, if you have a culvert by your house, make sure that it is cleared of different sticks and debris. We had lots of wind in this last storm and lots of different drifting and various things, and so that will help with the drainage because we don't know what might come when all of this melts. And so if you can do your part and help, that would be great. We're hoping that we won't have a significant amount of flooding, but we are being, getting prepared now for that next phase just in case that does in fact happen. And I believe that's all of my report, so I'll pass it back to you, Commissioner Thomas.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Moore, and we are very grateful for all of your hard work this week. It's truly been an emergency on top of an emergency. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just thank you so much to you and Kate. The two of you have really kept going, and it's been a lot to keep going through. So you did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for letting people know that they need to know about the warming stations. They can call 211. I wasn't aware of that, so thanks for sharing that information.
Yeah, absolutely. We were able to get that set up as well, and it's a wonderful service. They have lots of information, not just for Monroe County, but across the state. They, you know, provide services, and we are very fortunate that they have been able to give us, to work with us, to have various information that we can have a place for individuals to call when they actually want to talk to a person because oftentimes we are overwhelmed and don't have that time. I've gotten several calls from people, and I have been able to let them leave messages and get back with them, but 211 is an awesome way that they can get an individual when we may be too busy to make those connections during the actual event.
Yeah, that's a really good point, and it's an easy number to remember, and you don't have to have internet access. You just have to have a phone of some sort, which is a lot easier for folks who are in need. And someday, we'll have you, when you're more rested, we'll have you come back and tell the story of all the things you had to do to help stay on top of this latest storm. It's a lot of work. It's a lot more work than people realize. And coordinating all of these agencies and keeping everybody safe, it's so important. And thank you again, as Commissioner Jones said, both you and Kate did a great job, and we appreciate you and the steady hand. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we will turn to Ms. Ridge for traffic and road update, probably more of a road update today. Morning.
Good morning. So I guess we just have snow plowing to report that we've been doing since Sunday. We had the crews come in at 3:00 a.m. starting Monday morning. We gave them multiple breaks throughout that three-day window. Sent them home for a few hours, but overall, I think they did a great job overnight last night. We sent them all home yesterday at 3:00 or as soon as they were done with their routes so they could get a good night's rest. And I think we received one phone call for a slick spot overnight, so we didn't have to call anybody back in, which was a relief. So they all seemed good today. They're all back in their areas. We're working on widening some of the subdivision roads, which does push it over towards people's driveways, but we try and get that two-lane of traffic back open for the traveling motorists. So Toby's in here. They did, they did an awesome job. We've had a few complaints, but overall, they never let up, and they stuck with it. And we've seen, we've received more compliments than we really have complaints. So it was, it was a lot to take on, but they didn't give up, so.
Great, excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Well, yeah, thank you so much, Lisa and Toby and all the guys. It was a huge effort, and I'm sure that everyone is pretty exhausted at this point, even after one night's sleep. It is just amazing what was accomplished by everyone.
Yeah, I don't think, when we were in here Monday night, and it was a complete whiteout, and you think about those trucks out there on the hills and the curves and not being able to see. And, you know, we went out and rode with a couple of the drivers, and it's just, it's exhausting. You can imagine how tired you get with the stress of a loaded dump truck and motorists run off the road. And, but like I said, they did an awesome job. The management team out there, out here at the garage, put in all those hours also. They never give up. They never go home. So, yeah, it's, you have a great crew out there, so.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, don't just talk about everybody else, Ms. Ridge. I know that you were helping to stay off the dispatch center, and I know both you and Toby skipped a lot of sleep, too. So thank you for your efforts. It's a top-down effort. We know that.
It is. It's top to bottom. Every, it takes, it takes all of us to make it work, including you guys. And they appreciate the support that you guys have given them over the last few days. I know I reached out about food, and we made some arrangements for food for the guys. After they were done, they came on the radio and was, please tell the Commissioners and everybody, thank you so much for thinking about us out here. So, so from all those guys out there on the road that got pizza or a breakfast, they thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and this has been, this was a tough storm because there was so much snow, a huge snowfall amount, most we've seen in quite a while here at one time. And so for those who want to complain about a pile of snow somewhere on their street or at the end of their driveway or at a mailbox, please just know that it has to go somewhere. And they made great decisions all the way along, and, you know, I was amazed at how often I saw trucks going down my street in this week, and also that we could see asphalt again, which we really weren't expecting. So really excellent, excellent work. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. And again, it's all the hard work that goes on behind the scenes people aren't aware of. A really, really great job. So thank you so much to everyone.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Great. Thanks so much, and we will see you in a bit. And next we have Ms. Jackie Nestor-Jellen, who's from the Planning Department, who is going to be talking about our permitting software. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. So we did go live with our permitting software, so we're super excited. And I want to show you and the public a little bit about how to use it and which departments you can find using this permitting software. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So from the county website, what you'll be doing is going over to the "How Do I?" tab at the top, and you can go to "Apply for a Permit." Once you are into the system, it is easy to search for a permit that you're looking for by just typing in what you're looking for, and you can actually click any one of these permits that start coming up in the search. And then from here, it's very simple and easy. You should be able to read the left-hand side to let you know what you should be expecting in terms of fees, as well as required documents that you'll need to apply. And then you go ahead and you apply online. It will require that folks go ahead and set up an account with the system, but it is something that we're hopeful that everyone is able to use. So the different departments that you'll be able to find on this website include the Building Department, the Highway Department, the Planning Department, as well as the Health Department. So as far as the Health Department, I want to make sure that everyone understands that this will be for items such as septic permits or retail food establishment permits. This will not be something that you'll want to use to sign up for something like the vaccine. This is mainly for permit applications. And so as well with the Building Department, you can apply for residential permits, contract licensing, things like that. In the Highway Department, you're going to be looking for things like driveway permits, any kind of complaints that you have in terms of the right-of-way. And then the Planning Department, address requests, pre-design conferences, subdivisions, re-zones. And so the really nice thing about this system is that you'll be able to tell where your application is at after you submit. It will show you your progress, and it will show you when you have some documents issued to you by email. So you'll get your permits, your letters, all emailed to you automatically after the staff has a chance to go through it. So it's really a nice system, and it's cutting down a lot of the backend logistical challenges that we've had, especially given COVID. This will help people to not have to come into our office and fill out paperwork. This will allow you to do so electronically and also historically record-keeping. You'll be able to search for that on your own property and see history of records kept, from anything from septic to building permits, and that'll be a really nice system for the public to use. I also want to make a mention of people to thank, so I really want to thank the Commissioners for signing this contract with this service less than 12 months ago, and we have it up and running about two months ahead of time. So that's something really impressive. Staff has been prioritizing this. This is something we've really wanted for a long time because it helps the internal departments to be able to communicate better with each other. So now Planning can really understand that a property already has a septic permit issued, and we don't have to have that person physically go to the Health Department to pick up a physical record copy of that. We can see that on the backend. So that's something that's going to be really helpful in terms of coordination and planning and things like that. So we're very excited about this service. And like I said, you'll be able to access it from the county website, and if anyone has questions, they can call those individual departments as they're filling out those forms, and we'll be happy to help you. So with that, any questions that you have or anything that you'd like me to clarify, I'm happy to do so.
All right. Thank you so much for bringing this to us today. And Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
This really is exciting. I think a lot of people are going to find that it speeds up the whole process quite a bit, and that's going to make people quite happy, I think. Thank you to you, and I know you've really headed this up and put in a huge effort, but all kinds of people have put a big effort into getting this going in two months early. That's really impressive. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Now, the two months in advance, given all the problems that we've had with COVID, that's just phenomenal. So great, great job. Is this also going to be linked to some of the stormwater permitting?
Yes, stormwater will be accessible through this site. With the transition and stormwater, we're just making sure that those last permits are good to go. So there are some, basically, departments that have the capacity to come online, and we're just fine-tuning a few things before they actually come up in that search box that I showed. So yes, there's definitely capacity to actually include more departments on this software without any additional cost. So we're excited about the possibility of this expansion on this.
It'll allow the departments to work together, like It'll, it'll allow the departments to work together, like you said, but also I bet it'll cut down on people's frustration. Just speed things up.
I think so.
Yeah. Good point. And once our offices, we just dream of the day, once our offices are open again, we'll have some computers set up in our offices for folks to use. So if they don't have internet access or they're or they just need to come in and they're just used to coming in, that we can actually still use the software. So everything's integrated, but they'll be doing it at our offices, right?
Absolutely. And in this transition period, if folks still mail or email PDF copies, staff has the ability on the internal side to import that electronically. So it still is in the system, but it allows us a, a little bit of a transition period especially.
That's awesome. And I know that there is going to be an effort from technical services to try to upload older data. So data that's in records that have already been completed, but are stored on different servers elsewhere in the county to incorporate that into the system. But what, as, as Commissioner Giffens asked, I'll just kind of dig into that a little bit more. What, what other changes are coming? Or potentially coming to this software? How is it going to be expanded and what other changes can people look forward to seeing in the near future?
Yeah, I will say in terms of historical record keeping, it's actually in the department's interest as well as the public's interest to have all of our historical records in one concentric place. I can't tell you how many times, you know, highway wants something and planning and we have to, you know, share it and it, it takes some extra steps. So if we can get our historical data up online and people are able to see that both internal and externally, I think that will go a long way in the long run for historical records and being able to access things online more easily in one place. So as far as expanding capacity on the system, I do think that some other departments or even divisions within departments, the health department has several divisions that they have. And so we'll be seeing a few more of their divisions get uploaded into the software in the coming weeks. So food safety right now, wastewater are fully on the system. But environmental health, for instance, had a pretty good online system without going through this yet. So we're going to be working with them to, to expand the system a little bit and build it out. So our hope is to have those departments fully built out to the extent that they want to, and then we'll, we'll think about any other departments that want to get on and, and like it. So.
Excellent. Thank you again so much for bringing this to the public's attention and we'll be sure to keep letting people know all about it. And as new, new features come on board, come on back and share some more information with the public. That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Very interested. Thank you.
So much. The Assistant Director from Planning, Ms. Nestor Gillen. Thank you for being here. Let's see if there are any other departments that have an update that they would like to provide. I don't see any. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment. This is for public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Please raise your hand. Just go to the bottom of the screen, raise hand and we will bring you over. You will have a total of three minutes available to you to speak. Ms. Dayton at Technical Services will sound a tone when you have 30 seconds remaining in your speaking time. Right on cue. Thank you for stating. And it looks like we have a few people with some questions and, or comments, I should say, Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the Greater Williams Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of the business community, we want to express our appreciation and kudos to all the work that you and your staff and your departments have been doing through this craziness. We cannot have an economy if people cannot get around and communicate and interact with each other, which is difficult enough with COVID. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And to planning, that permitting thing will greatly smooth things out for a lot of businesses and a lot of people. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. We appreciate having you here. Looks like we have questions or comments from B Square Beacon. Good morning.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Sweet. This is a question for maybe some meeting in the near future. So the COVID numbers are headed significantly down, which means we're probably going to be told sooner maybe than we would like that we'll have to return to in-person government meetings. So I'm wondering if the renovations to the Nat Hill Room are done, how those are going. So I was hoping that maybe on some Wednesday in the near future, we could get an update on how things are looking in the Nat Hill Room. Thanks.
Excellent. That is a great question. And we are also looking forward to the day where we could all see each other face to face. Our plan is, as you know, to continue to have a Zoom component. So we can invite Mr. Evans to attend a future meeting next week or two and have him talk about progress on the renovation. So that, that's a great idea and we will do that. Thank you. All right. Let's see if there are any other items for public comments. All right. I don't see any. So with that, we will continue with our agenda and to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for February 10th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Comments, questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of minutes for February 10th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims stack it accounts payable February 17th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning, Mr. Miller. Tell us all about it.
Good morning. The total for claims was $3,509,785.04. $1,292,850.17 was for Washington Township Water, which was for utility relocation construction for sample road. $1,229,975.91 was for Anthem, Blue Cross and Blue Shield for February claims, fees and premiums. And finally, $551,754.26 was for Crider and Crider, Inc. For the profile Parkway extension.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
What's the countdown?
Thirty-nine is the number today. Thank you.
Just a little longer than the first day of spring, I'll have you know.
That's right.
We're all getting very excited for you both.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. The public will have, anybody wants to make comment, we'll have three minutes. Get that same tone being sounded when you have 30 seconds remaining. I don't see any. Just click on raise hand at the bottom of the screen. Okay. I don't see any public comment. So with that, we'll come back for roll call vote. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claims docket accounts payable February 17th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. All right. I will note that we have received a report from the treasurer. It is her report for January 2021. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Move to approve one, public hearing regarding reauthorization of the cumulative capital development fund. And two, ordinance 2021 dash zero four, approval of the reauthorization of the commute cumulative capital development fund. Fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138 and the amount is not relevant.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on the reauthorization of the cumulative capital development fund. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is part of the state statute and state guidelines on reestablishing a, a cumulative capital development fund. Most of my comments will also apply to the next item, which is the major bridge fund. Essentially, how they calculate both those funds, it erodes the, the rate every year as it goes through the process to set tax rates and levies through the state. This is just to reauthorize the ability of the county council when they set the tax rates and levies to use the maximum amount. They are the ultimate deciders on what the actual rate is. But there is a statutory deadline in April of making sure that the reauthorization is done. So give them that flexibility.
Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak during our public hearing on this item. Just click on the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Take a gander here. And it looks like we do not have any hands raised. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on the cumulative capital development fund reauthorization and take comments or questions from Commissioner Jones.
I don't have any. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. All right. With that, our public hearing is closed and we have, we'll take, if you could call the roll on ordinance 2021 dash zero four, please, Mr. Cockrell.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of one public hearing regarding reauthorization of the major bridge fund and two, ordinance 2021 dash zero five, approval of reauthorization of the major bridge fund. Fund name, major bridge, fund number 1171 and the amount is not relevant.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yeah, this is essentially the same process we went through with the last one. Just a reminder to you and the public that the major bridge fund can only be used for bridges over 200 feet in length. We have quite a few of those. I think the intent of the current major bridge funds include the bridges for the Fulton Pike extension. So other than that, the reasoning is the same as, is to allow the council the maximum flexibility.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the reauthorization of the major bridge funds. If anybody from the public has questions or comments, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Mr. Shelton, please.
Good morning again. Speaking on behalf of the redevelopment commission this time, I want to encourage you to approve this. This, as Jeff said, is a major part of funding the, the Fulton Pike extension. As well as you'll need it throughout the rest of the county for maintenance of bridges over 200 feet. So please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's important to have a full fund for these projects coming up. And then as, as Mr. Shelton, it's also for maintenance on these longer bridges, which we're getting more of. Anyone else have any comment they wish to make during the public hearing? I do not see any. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and see if there are any comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
Yep, not now.
Commissioner Giffens?
I think one of the things that you alluded to is important to point out to the public that bridges in the past that might've been 200 feet long because of changes in, in requirements and regulations now are 300 or 400 feet long. And so, yeah, it's going to take more and more to both build and to maintain these bridges.
Very good. Thank you so much. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021 dash zero five?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Move on to the next item, please.
Move to approve the approval of claims under the Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19 expenses. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000 dash 36996 dash 000 dash 0069 in the amount of $62,027.51.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Gregory?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Today we have four claims up for approval. This is a continuation of the CARES grant, which you have generously moved forward through April 30th. So today I'm hoping you will approve Cave Group, Boys and Girls Club, Bluebird and Life Designs reimbursements for COVID expenses. And again, this is the continuation of the CARES program where the county is making some CARES funding available to local businesses. You may be struggling with COVID expenses. This information can be found on the county website. The easiest way to get to the information is under the breaking news category. There's a link. So.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Gregory. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just that I'm very happy that we'll be able to do this with the help of the county council. As Mr. Shelton said earlier, it's pretty bad if we don't have an economy. So it's very worthwhile to try to help keep our businesses going and non-for, not-for-profits.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really pleased that we're able to help the Boys and Girls Club. When COVID first hit and all kinds of childcare opportunities closed down, the Boys and Girls Club stepped up to the plate and worked really, really hard to have safe, affordable childcare available, especially for our essential workers. They just, wow. They really, really did a lot to keep things moving in our local economy, in fact. So please that we're able to do this.
Yeah. Excellent point. Great. And thank you again, Ms. Gregory, for your work on coordinating this line with our administrator. And I know Ms. Malone has also been working very hard on this. And as Ms. Gregory noted, there is a form to fill out. The deadline has been moved to April 30th. And there's a form to fill out at co.munro.in.us for non-payroll COVID-related expenses that have not been covered elsewhere. Whether through another loan or grant program. And there's just some simple paperwork to fill out and this is a grant to businesses and not-for-profits and also taxing units that did not receive COVID money directly. So with that, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just click on the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen. And I do not see any. Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of claims on the Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19 expenses?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. All right. And we have the next item, please.
Move to approve the 2020 Community Corrections Grant Annual Report. Move to approve the 2020 Community Corrections Grant Annual Report.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Good morning, Ms. Wright.
Morning, all. Thank you for letting me be here. 2020, as many departments, was a little different for us. But in 2020, Community Corrections received our 37th year of Department of Correction Grant funding. Since the beginning of our Community Corrections Program in 1983, our department has grown by leaps and bounds, not only having more staff and more programs, but also serving a lot more clients. Community Corrections, we operate our Community Alternative Supervision Program or CASP, and that includes our home detention, electronic monitoring and day reporting programs. We also operate the four problem-solving courts, Drug Treatment Court, Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, and our Reentry Court. And then we also run our community service and our pretrial services program. In 2020, we received just over 1.3 million in grant funds, which went towards our Community Corrections CASP programs, our Drug Treatment Court, and our Mental Health Court. Also, I want to point out the amazing work that our staff did through the pandemic and continues to do through the pandemic. We realize the importance of continuing to serve not only our clients for uninterrupted services, but also our community and enforcing community safety. So even though some of the office was closed in last spring, we still had staff who were coming in every day during that closure. Our pretrial staff was coming in to complete jail assessments on people who had just been arrested. So the judges could use that information to make release decisions. And then our problem-solving courts were still running with regular court hearings and even check-ins. Just a few highlights of 2020 are, we had about 938 felony cases referred to our CASP programs. That's day reporting, home detention, post-sentence home detention, and pretrial. We also did just over 1,500 pretrial assessments in 2020, and these are assessments where our staff goes into the jail. Or during 2020, we were doing virtual meetings and completes an assessment, a risk-based assessment, which allows the judges to use that information to determine if somebody is, can be released from the jail without having to pay any cash. One of the other exciting announcements for our pretrial program is the past several years, we've been operating as a pilot program. Monroe County was one of 11 counties that volunteered to run a pilot project to develop and implement pretrial services. And at the end of last year, about last fall, we officially became a pretrial certified program by the Indiana Office of Court Services. And so that's very exciting. Under the leadership of Judge Mary Ellen Decoff and partnership with all our stakeholders, our pretrial program has demonstrated to the state that we're following evidence-based practices and best practices for pretrial, which allowed us to be certified. Also, through the pandemic, under the leadership of Judge Decoff and her Problem Solving Court team and staff, we continued to run all our problem-solving courts. Specifically, our Community Corrections, our Department of Correction Grant funded our Drug Treatment Court, which is in its 21st year of operation and had its 474th graduate as of December 31. And then our Mental Health Court in its sixth year of operation had its 17th graduate by December 31. So we're very proud of all of the work that our clients have done through those programs. And then, of course, just to reiterate how grateful I am for all our probation officers and probation Community Corrections staff who have continued tirelessly to promote evidence-based practices and support for all our clients who we know have been truly affected by COVID in numerous ways. So I think that is it. If there's any questions.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones.
Congratulations on having the pretrial program certified. That's
Thank you.
exciting program. I believe that kind of countrywide communities are becoming interested in this.
Yes.
Many, many communities have overcrowded jails, and this does help quite a bit to keep people out of jail who don't need to be there. And also saves a huge amount of money. Having people in jail is very, very expensive.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Githens.
I'm really pleased about what's going on with the problem-solving courts. It allows people to stay employed, stay with their families, continuous parents. Keeps a lot of disruption in people's lives down. Plus, it keeps them from having, if they are successful, it keeps them from having felonies on their record. I was really pleased to see 474 people graduated from the Drug and Alcohol Court. Wow. And anybody who thinks that this is an easy thing should go watch a session of this with Judge Decoff. But you step out of line and she's on you. She knows. She follows every single person in there. And so kudos to everybody.
Yes, Judge is amazing with her problem-solving courts.
Yeah, it's a fabulous system, the way everybody works together, and it's really done a lot of good in the community and helps folks move on and make a better life for themselves and their families. And it's a great alternative to to being in jail. So excellent, excellent work. And thank you to you and your staff. And I know COVID has thrown a real curveball into all of your work day to day. And there's just been a lot of flexibility and thoughtfulness and creativity about how to continue your work. So we appreciate that. Let's see if there are any public comments. Just click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the zoom screen. I do not see any. And so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll in 2020 Community Corrections Grant Annual Report?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item E, please.
Move to approve South Central RMC Utility Relocation Agreement for Sample Road Project. Fun name local road and street on number 1169 in the amount of $622,907.41.
Second.
Great. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge.
Hello again. So this agreement is for the relocation of the electrical lines for the sample road project. It is an 80% match from reimbursement from NDOT. The west side is at a cost of $420,384.41, and the east side is $202,523. Both of these projects are set to go to letting in April and May.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones.
I'm sorry, no, I don't.
Commissioner Githens.
Yeah, I think that you shared with us last week that this was very time-sensitive, and if we didn't take care of this quickly, there was a chance that we would not get this state funding. So thank you for moving on it very, very quickly.
Yeah, I have to thank Dave Schelling. He's worked with us a lot on the condemnations and getting these utility agreements to keep it in this fiscal year because we were unable to move it out past the May letting if we didn't get these contracts in place and and get all the right-of-way secured. So actually, I was just thinking I need to contact Dave because I think he has some papers for you guys to sign before the utility company meets tomorrow evening. So, so, yeah, it's been very time-sensitive. We weren't sure we were going to make this, but with the help of everybody, I think we're going to be good to go.
Excellent. Yes, great work. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of work to be done on East Sample Road and West Sample Road is coming next. But it's important, it's important work. So we appreciate that with the interchange with I-69. This is, this work has to get done, and it will help the folks who live on that road to be safer as well. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand in the, at the bottom of the zoom screen, raise hand feature. Do not see anyone. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on these motion to approve the South Central RMC Utility Relocation Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Smithville Telephone Company Agreement for Communications Relocation for Sample Road Project. Fun name local road and street on number 1169 in the amount of $52,662.75.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge.
Oh, this is for the communication lines to be relocated for the west side. This is also a reimbursement of 80% by NDOT. Expected payment is in the fall of 2021.
Great. Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Githens.
Does the, do you know if the Smithville line, if that includes some of their broadband? Because I know we had talked a while back about anytime there was something being done on a road that we would work with them. So do you know if this includes their broadband line?
Certainly find out what the exact, the more in-depth proposal is. Yes, I'll get an answer for that.
Great. That was exactly my question, Commissioner Githens. Like, we're digging up roadway. Now is the time.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we definitely need to make sure we have broadband services expanded wherever possible. We're
I can't imagine them not going with broadband at this point for the full road reconstruction. So.
Yeah, yeah. Or it may be part of the RMC. It depends on whose service area this is. So, yeah, it's great. Great question. Excellent. If you could look into that, let us know. And if anything we can do to assist, just let us know, Ms. Ridge. That would be great. Let's see if there are any comments or questions from our viewers. Raise your hand. Just click on the raised hand icon at the bottom of the zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Smithville Telephone Company Agreement for Communications Relocations?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And our added item G. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve ratification to, for the emergency declaration.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, did you want to speak on this item?
I certainly can. As everyone's aware, the weather's been terrible. And that because of the conditions of the road and the low temperatures, there was a emergency declared to make sure that people were safe and stayed off the road. This is a ratification of that emergency declaration.
I can also add that because of this declaration and ratifying it today will allow the Emergency Management Department to file for FEMA reimbursement for all of the materials, the hours, the fuel and supplies that were used during this disaster. We will have to meet a threshold, and we may or may not meet that threshold. But we will definitely strive to get 75% of those funds back if we would, in fact, meet that threshold due to this declaration being declared.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore. I appreciate that input. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones.
Oh, it certainly will be nice if we can get the FEMA reimbursement grant. Times like this are extremely expensive, and I know that highway had to use a whole lot of their materials for the roads. So they're going to have to replace them.
Absolutely. And I guess I'd like to just add, that's, that's not the reason why this declaration was declared by any means. There were so much that went behind the scenes between the commissioner's work and our office and and the highway Ellisville Street and City of Bloomington Street Department, and they, the truckers just couldn't see. And we knew that we needed to get cars off the roads for the protection of our residents and the protection of our drivers. And so first and foremost, that's, that's the main reason why that declaration went in, disaster declaration went into place. So first and foremost, that's our responsibility is keeping individuals and then, of course, our public safety safe. So but because of that, now we have the opportunity to apply for that funding on behalf of the Monroe County Emergency Management.
Thank you for that clarification. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens.
Yeah, I just want to point out too that when, when we do things like this, it keeps the roads safer for all of our first responders and for the, our medical healthcare people. So we really appreciate people who stayed home during this.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point, Commissioner Githens. It's a really, really good point. Yes, and it was pretty dire when this, when we, when we had to go to red because they could not see. And it's so dangerous. And I know that there were some emergency vehicles that had to be assisted. And that's exactly why we needed to go to travel condition red. And this declaration is a must to go to that red level. So absolutely worked with all the great folks who were out there doing the hard work and letting us know what the conditions were and the situation was, communicating between offices and people. And it went, it went as smoothly as it could. But it's also true, Ms. Moore, that the state would have to also declare an emergency, correct? In order for us to even be eligible for any FEMA funding, correct?
We can apply even when the state doesn't. The chances of us meeting that threshold when the state does not is very, very slim. But with the amount of counties that did, in fact, have to implement that red warning, you know, at that point, it is, it's not something that's happened yet, but I'm, I'm holding off, hoping that that state will go back and review that and provide that help and assistance in order for us to be able to push it through. So we'll continue to try in hopes. We're definitely fighting and pushing hard, I guess, for the state to go ahead and implement some paperwork in place and, and therefore we'll be able to have a better chance of getting that FEMA reimbursement.
Great. Thank you so much for that clarification. All right, so let's see if there is any public comments on this item. I know the public wants to send thanks to everybody who worked so hard during the snow event. All right, I don't see any hands raised.
Ms. Rich had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rich.
I didn't know how to raise my hand. I haven't caught on to that. No, I wanted to thank Allison and whatever she needs from us for any tracking, we put everything into our asset management program. So we know all the materials, hours, and all the extra costs are completely tracked. So anything we can do to assist in getting reimbursement for any of our funding would be greatly appreciated.
And Ms. Ridge, you still have a send help sign on your file cabinet behind you, which has kind of been shadowing you. Just thought I, just
I didn't even see it back there. But yeah, please send help.
Thanks, Toby. Awesome. All right. All right. So with that, without any other public comment, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call a roll on ratifying the Monroe County Disaster Emergency Declaration for Travel Restriction?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
And I will note that this was lifted yesterday at Tuesday at 1:30. So just so folks know, we're ratifying something that was done and is already over. But, all right, so with that, move on to our last agenda item, please.
Move to approve resolution. Move to approve Resolution Number 2021-12.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Would somebody like to provide a Reader's Digest version of this resolution?
Sure. There are two bills before the Indiana House. One is House Bill 1328, which is about subdividing land, which really takes away authority from our local county government in different ways. And then the second one is House Bill 1381, which again removes our ability to both cite and create standards for commercial wind and solar electrical generation. And we feel like this is impending on local rule. And so this resolution is expresses our opposition to both of these bills because we feel that local people know what suits them best, what works in the plains up near West Lafayette is not the same as what works here in Monroe County. And we feel like we're in a better position to make those decisions.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that what the attempts at the state to take away home rule in a number of different fashions is really very perturbing. These are people who talk a lot about their freedom. And yet they want to take away the freedom of many individuals in this state to determine how their locality should do things.
Commissioner Giffens, anything else to add?
Yes, we're, we're not opposed to solar and wind generation of power. We just want to be able to have control locally of how things progress. We're the ones that receive feedback from our local residents. We're the ones who are available and we're on the ground listening. So we want to maintain that authority.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and both of you made some great points. You're so right. There's, there are so many bills circulating at the General Assembly right now. It's, it is really hard to keep track of them. I'm grateful that we do have a lobbyist who's tracking bills and keeping us informed because that would have been an impossible task in terms of time, especially this year. It's always been tough, but this year would have been really, really tough for us to do. But it's about everything from what the Health Department can and can't do when there's a pandemic to these local, these what should be local decisions about land use. The, the idea that anybody could subdivide land and build a house wherever they want without any local input, without neighbors giving input, it could be anywhere in the county is just, just so difficult to fathom how that is a service to anyone who lives in the county who has property, who wants to protect the value of their property and who wants to have input on density and the impact on infrastructure and roads especially. You know, you put 20 houses on a gravel road, all of a sudden, that's, that's causing a lot of problems for our highway department. So intersections, emergency services, emergency responses, stormwater, the quality of our drinking water, all of these things are impacted when you do any construction, whether it be of, and I would assume in this, this part of the state, it would be, it would be solar, but especially building residential properties at will. So, and it looks like Ms. Nestor Jellin has a comment. Please.
I also just add for the subdividing property bill, it's alarming because also if property is subdivided and does not meet zoning requirements, the person that buys the property may not be able to develop it under the zoning requirements. And so it's, it's deceiving because someone could subdivide their property, sell it to somebody that doesn't know it was created under an exception and then be faced with having to go through the variance process to develop it, which, you know, may be costly and could be risky if the property is not even developable. So we are alarmed by the bill and we thank you for, for bringing up this resolution.
Yeah. So we encourage residents who care about their community and local home rule to contact their representative or their senator in the Indiana General Assembly. House Bill 1381 relates to deciding of wind and solar projects and House Bill 1328 relates to the subdivision of property. Somebody's trying to get rid of planning commissions and that does not bode well for our community or communities across the state. Let's see if there's any other public comments. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Resolution 2021-12?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Can I have a strong yes? Is that, is that allowable?
Emphatic.
Motion is approved 3-0. But there's one strong yes.
No, I think there's, I think there's three strong emphatic yeses here. So we could underline it. Thank you. All right. We don't have any appointments today. Just a couple of quick notes. We just want to extend our thank you to everyone in Monroe County government who went the extra mile, no pun intended, to really get, get our residents through this storm as safely as possible. And that goes to everything from our road crews to emergency management, our health department who had to work to get appointments rescheduled for the vaccine clinic and juggle even more work than usual. Our maintenance staff did an excellent job around our buildings, stayed ahead of that storm. And everybody in county government who really just made sure that we continue to serve our community. And they did so from the safety of home, but they worked hard to make sure that that happened. Just a reminder to folks that if you are connected with a business in Monroe County or a social service organization, that if you have some COVID-related expenses that have not been covered by other means, to please go to co.monroe.us and apply for a grant. Who cares money? The grant has been extended, ratification has been extended to April 30. These, this is for non-payroll COVID-related expenses that have not been covered by other grants or loans. Also, a note to the folks who live in the county, if you, every, every Monroe County resident lives in a township, if you are struggling to pay your bills, especially things like utility bills, which has skyrocketed, or rents. So if you're having a hard time with the basic necessities and paying for them, and especially with COVID, please contact your township trustee. We have worked with council to provide funding and that funding is sitting at $200,000 right now and more is ready when and if the township trustees need it. So if you need a list of your, of contact information for your township trustee, please go to co.monroe.us and click on the Emergency Management Department webpage for that information. And let's see if my colleagues have anything else that they wish to add.
No, I don't. I just want to remind people that if they need to go find out where one of these warming stations is, that they can easily call that 211 number. And they probably could get help there even if they needed to about how to reach their township trustee.
Yep. It's very, very true. That's very, very true. Absolutely. Good point. All right. So with that, we are adjourned.